Adam and Rhonda, I'm not sure whether there'll be video. At all, because it wasn't clear whether the power is restored at the town hall yet. I'm muted.
Are you talking about the town board meeting?
No, I'm talking about the planning board meeting, which is supposed to be happening now.
Oh. Hmm, okay.
As you.
So what happened with the town board meeting?
It went on in the, under the emergency lights. But. So probably.
Did Ted record it then?
Well, no, there was no recording because, you know, we lost power and consequently internet went out too. Hello, Adam. Nice to see you.
So what was the decision about the petition?
The, there evidently is a list, which I wasn't aware of, but Leslie pointed out, of, of roads that are sort of in a queue to be, to be submitted. When we got the results from the last batch, we were told, first of all, they like to get them in batches as opposed to having one at a time. But we were also told, you know, don't be in a big hurry to submit more because we have swamped. Of course, they could solve that problem by giving us the authority to set our own speed limits, but that's, you know, where we, that's not where we are. So, so the decision was to consult the, the list and, and see if we, if we want to prioritize off Dambie Road in that list or, or other ones, depending on how long they've been waiting. You know, importantly, they are. So there was no decision made, you know, other than to consult the list and see, you know, which ones to submit next. But there was a sense that we ought to submit a batch.
Okay. Um. So there's not going to be a hearing?
About that, there wouldn't be a hearing anyway. It's just a matter of town board resolution recommending to the state, which has to go through the county, that they reduce the speed limits on whatever roads, you know, or requested. And then it takes, it takes, it takes several years for it to get processed.
Right. I know. I've talked to the woman who, who handles it in Albany. And she told me about a year and a half, long ago when I talked to her.
Yeah. Because every, every municipality in the state is in the same situation where we don't have control over our own speed limits, so we have to submit requests to lower from the unit, state uniform speed limit of 55, which prevails in the absence of any kind of reduction.
Do you happen to know why Bald Hill Road is 30?
Uh, it's 35, isn't it?
No, 30.
Yeah. I don't even remember. I wasn't on the board when, when Bald Hill Road was, was petitioned for. So I was a little surprised to see it posted what it is.
Uh huh.
And I'm also a little surprised to see it.
I don't know of any other county road in the county that's 30 miles an hour.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I think that the minimum that, I mean, the max, yeah, the minimum that they'll reduce it to is 35 until recently, because the, we, we submitted and got approval for the, for the subdivisions, Old Town Village, Fieldstone Circle, were approved to reduce it to, I think it was 35. And, and I, but I might be remembering the wrong, the number wrong, but whatever it was, it was faster than we wanted. But that was as low as they would go. Since then, they have admitted of a lower speed, but they didn't want, they don't want us to resubmit for some time. So you can't go back and say, well, we'd rather you went to a lower speed than what you approved for these roads. It's like, well, you know, do some of the other ones first and then come back, you know, after a few years, if you still think that.
But as far as I remember, and I could be wrong, you know, I've been here 47 years and I don't ever remember Bald Hill Road ever being anything but 30.
Really? Yeah, I do.
And it was 55 then?
Yep. Except for, except for the very bottom of it. You know, the part where before you get to Pond Road or, or Libro, I forget, you know, not too far apart, but in that, that bottom stretch there was, was less. Then the rest of it was not. And now it's all the way up and through the state forest, which I can't believe we got the speed limit reduced to the state forest, but. But I wasn't, like I say, I wasn't on the board. That's what I mean to ask Leslie about. I have a hunch that Carl just went ahead and posted it.
Well, uh, that sounds interesting. Uh, yeah, but that's, that's what the people on South Dambie Road really want is they want the ability to be able to, I mean, the people that signed the petition, they want to be able to get out there and walk their dogs and walk with their kids and ride bikes and the whole kind of sharing of the road, but also that feeling of community that you get when you can say hi to your neighbor as you're walking by or stop and talk and that sort of thing and, and not feel that you're going to be mowed down.
Yeah. And, and of course I have an issue with the fact that the county keeps repaving wider. And, and the wider pavement reads like, you know, faster speed. People go faster when the road.
Yes.
You, you flatten the roads and you smooth them out and you, and you, you know, make the curves more gentle and you take some of the hills out and people go faster and faster and faster. They're repaving Hillby Road right now. It was a 21 feet and they're repaving it 24 feet.
Well, it's good that you documented that, I hope. Because that's part of the lawsuit.
Yeah. Well, you know, every time, I could say, they're about to repave Station Road same way, except I hope they don't do my end of it. Because I'm going to squawk pretty loud if they do. But, but the lower part, I mean, they've already got it. When they put the new coverage in, they paved to 24 feet.
Okay, alright.
And I think that's what they intend to do, you know, and then you said, and, and the argument that Jeff Smith made is that it's safer. Because you've got, you know, paved, paved shoulder. And it's safer for whom, you know, because I mean, a foot and a half is not enough to be, you can't ride on it.
But they don't have the right to do that. They're, they're taking people's property and they don't have the right to do that.
Well, you know, the, you know, how wide is the right of way? It's based on use.
There's no, no, it is not.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It's based on use of way back when, when it was at least on South Dambie Road, when the road was 14 feet. And you can't say that just because you widen it, then you're using it. No, it's, that's widening it and then using it. It's not using it and then widening it.
So, I mean, as, as I understand it, you know, every time they, they, they claim all the way out as far as they mow and they mow pretty darn far.
Yes. Oh, yes. Around here, they mowed 12 feet on my neighbor's property. 12 feet.
Yeah, no, they're pretty, they're pretty aggressive.
Or that they have even a right of way to that. There's no such thing as a right of way, at least on South Dambie Road. I can't talk about any other road, but not on South Dambie Road. There is no right of way on South Dambie Road.
Well, I mean, there's a right of way on every road, but. And, and, but, but only in the, in our subdivisions do they own it in fee.
Right.
And, and, and the others are all by, by, by use. And they claim to the outside of the ditch, you know, the back, back slope of the ditch. Which, in the case of my property down on the street, you know, the, the backside of the ditch is, well, the middle of the ditch is 28 feet from the center of the road.
And did they pay you for taking the land for the ditch?
No, of course not. Every time they, every time they ditch, you know, they always pull from the backside and claim a little bit more.
Uh huh. Tree?
Yeah, you know, and that's how, that's how, that's how the right of way gets wider. And mowing it does it. You know, there's a presumption that if it's a large tree, that it's not theirs, because obviously they're not using it. If there's a big tree there. But they'll, they'll, they'll assert, you know, at least 50 feet. And if the tree is within that 50 foot, they'll say it's in the right of way. They take them out without even talking to you. Happened to me on Hillby Road.
Well, I was going up to Albany about a month ago and got off at a spot called Duane'sville. And there was a house there. When you get off at Duane'sville, the road probably was an old.
I should let everybody else in here. We got a bunch of other people were trying to get in.
There was an old road probably at one time, but now it was, it's a state road and the pavement goes within a foot of the front doorstep to this house.
Yeah, yeah. So folks, it looks like, I mean, I, I, I signed into the meeting and it doesn't look like Greg got his laptop to work. So I presume the planning board is meeting. And they're, the, the intention is to, if they couldn't video conference, which it appears they can't, to adjourn the hearings for the public, for the public hearing to another meeting, maybe next, next week, next Tuesday, and, and continue that hearing so that people have a chance to make comments who can't tonight because they came this way instead of in person. So I see Heather's here, kind of wondering whether is, Heather, is Zach at the meeting?
Greg did text me about half an hour ago that the town hall does have power. So they'll, they'd likely get through the full agenda.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can.
So right now they're trying to get the host situation working on Greg's phone. Everybody's here, the board's here. We're just trying to get the, I think he just figured it out, so.
Is it, is there power? Because if there's power, you could use, you could use the computer and, and the screen is there.
He says it's not. That's the problem.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Hey, everyone.
Hi.
Greg's at my here. Um, so that, that, I think I'm a bit of a tight, a bit of a wrong thinking.
Trying to mute.
So the town hall has power, but not internet.
Oh, that's interesting.
So we won't be able to share our screen tonight. So that's, that's, that, that's that. Yeah. So while we're doing everything, we have people here in the audience, but we won't be able to share screen and, and so we'll just go ahead. I'll be turning my video off so that we can just kind of have a, it'd be pretty much like a call in conference number. And, and we'll go from there. So we do, we do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. And then a few actions by the board. It's a pretty packed agenda for such a chaotic night. And so, but I guess I'll, I'll, now I, I'll, I'm going to turn my video off and.
But you're, but the, the microphone doesn't work either, right? Because, or does it?
Well, it's connected to, well,
No, because it's not connected to your phone, so.
Yeah, we're, I'm using my phone. It's not connected to the phone. So it's just going to be, it's just going to be this, this method. So that's why the thought was, we were debating earlier today if we needed to maybe adjourn the public hearing to next week and then punt all these cases to next week, but there's a quorum aboard here and I think everybody is ready to just do the meeting and, and, and these, these reviews as is.
Yeah, we have a pretty good audience too, in person. So I think we'll take up everyone who made their way here with no power. Keep it rolling.
Okay. Alright, so I'll turn this off. And if you can, if you can hear anybody, you know, participants on Zoom, just let us know.
Okay. This is Kelly. I will call the meeting to order. Um, yeah, so as noted, we are doing verbal over Zoom, so hopefully you can hear us. I just realized as a reminder to everyone who's here, if you just make sure you sign in before you leave, so we know who came to the meeting in person. Um, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? No. Okay. We will continue with the agenda as, as posted. A privilege of the floor. Would anyone care to speak generally, not specific to a project that's having a public hearing tonight?
I don't know if it's general or specific. I don't know if it's general or specific, but I really.
That's pretty dysfunctional too.
I really understand what the planning board does. My name is Marty.
Our audio comes and goes, mostly goes.
With that. Thanks, can't speak at another time.
Thanks, Marty. So it looked like we had lost. This might be a little chaotic because we're using, we're using data, so we're not using wifi here at the town hall. So there might be some ins and outs. People on Zoom, did you catch that? That was Marnie Kirchgessner. Giving support.
I thought there was Marnie, but nothing that she said.
Okay. So Marnie was just giving support for the, the businesses here and found the, the Dambie Food and Drink and Zach and Heather's upcoming coffee shop. And I'll try to, I'll, I'll, I'll try as best I can actually to keep the video. Well, no, actually I, no, I'm, I am going to turn the video off, I realize, because that does take up a little bit of data, so.
It seems to be better when you, when you have the video on and when it's off, but I don't know, but that's bizarre.
All right, we'll keep the video off. So.
Anyone else care to speak during privileges floor? I don't think there's anyone on the screen.
Well, it's Kelly completely there.
I don't see any answers. Okay. Um.
I'm gonna leave. Good night, everybody.
I made, I made it similarly because we're not getting, we're not catching enough to catch the drift.
All right. Does anyone want to make?
Are you, is the audio not, audio's not doing well?
That's an understatement. I've heard nothing of what has transpired recently.
So maybe I'll, I'll try Joel's suggestion of turning my video on to see if it actually records better. How about that?
Let's see how it goes. It can't be, it can't be any worse.
Yeah. One, one thing I do want to note, so if the minutes are going to be approved tonight, it sounds like there's still some people not able to access their, their town email. So you can either give me your personal email and we'll add it to the distribution list, or if you still want to use town email, do, you know, call Mariah, you know, the, the main, the main line. And she'll, she has a password for you and she can help you get, get set up that way. But I know there were at least a few board members that weren't able to access her email still. So please do that because it, it does help when getting minutes and things like that out.
Okay. So since we don't have a quorum, we will bypass the approval of the minutes. That's something. Um, town board liaison, Leslie, are you doing that?
Yeah, I'm just, I think I was just. Trying to, because of conversations we've been having at board meetings. Interesting maybe and things that you guys might want to, and one of those. When you interest in effort at dealing with.
I think you gotta, Leslie, I think you gotta come up and talk into the phone. Works better wherever it's close to the phone.
Just hold on, hold on.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
But yeah, right. Um. Uh, you know, it's a complicated process. People have been complaining about vacant properties or messes and yards full of compost, things like that. So, you know, the zoning, it's, it's been a headache for the zoning officer to deal with these, and they've all pretty much been dealt with. And, you know, you run into roadblocks, people don't, don't respond or they respond, say, yeah, I'll fix it and they don't, or it's hard to get ahold of people, owners, property owners. So that, that's, we talked about that and, you know, maybe even trying to find funding for people if they're having trouble, you know, tearing down a building or fixing it. And the other thing that's come up recently is, or again, is speed limit request for reduction. And the most recent request came from South Dambie Road. And the town board had, had agreed upon a list of roads that we would submit to the state for reductions or changes. And I, I think we, South Dambie Road actually isn't on that list. Because I, I think we submitted a request for reduction a while ago and we got a no. But that doesn't mean we can't do it again, but I, I'm going to assume the board will, at the next meeting, revisit that list and maybe put, try again for South Dambie Road and, and there may be a reason to change some of the priorities.
Is Gunderson on the list?
Never. Yeah, it is. It is on the list. Yeah. Nope. Gunderson is on the list. Yeah.
I would be happy to register, please, saying what.
I can change the view settings to have that background effect. So there's no blur. Yet none. There we go. Might be easier to see people way in the back. Okay. And way over there, down there. Alright. So. Sorry, folks, just wanted to make sure.
Muted yourself though.
Okay, on to our development reviews. First up is the 405 Troy Road. Uh, is anyone from the applicant on the Zoom?
Yeah, Adam.
Adam, okay, okay. Hi, Adam. Um. Do you want to start and just kind of give us a brief overview of what you are requesting?
Sure, we're asking to take a 10 acre part, parcel of our 70 acre property and make, uh, allow, allow us to sell it if we choose to, to someone so they could put a home on it.
Okay. Um, and then I think, do we, you want to talk about the potential conservation easement and the impacts? I know you've got to know about talking about how that might impact schedule, but if we wanted hold that for the next round.
Yeah, maybe it's just a question. And so, you know, the, right, the, and, and Adam, did you want to talk about the conservation easement?
Well, I'd be happy to give a, a brief summary. We intend to put a conservation easement on the 70 acre property with allowance to have the old family home, which faces 405 Troy Road. The possibility of having one home put in on the Nelson Road area, the 10 acre piece, and one more home allowed on the property in a designated area near those two roads, near Troy and Nelson Road. The exact, we, we have a meeting actually tomorrow to begin working out the specific language on the conservation easement, but it's our intent to have on the distant part of the property, approximately the distant, the most northern 24, 25 acres, a remote area of wilderness. And then the more proximate area of about 35 acres or so that would allow agricultural use with the area right adjacent to the roads there where the homes could be. So that's kind of the intent.
Great, thank you.
So in terms of process, it, you know, the, they can both kind of go in tandem, the, the minor subdivision of the property from one lot to two lots. And then, you know, it sounds like the intention is to place a conservation easement over that entire, both lots. So neither one precludes each other. It's just the, the easement language would, would just mention both properties if, because the subdivision would likely be acted on well before the conservation easement documents are all ready to be in, in, in place. So.
Okay, so our essential action for tonight is declare, declaring lead agency, reviewing the short environmental assessment form. And then of course, any questions outstanding and if we want to determine if we want to schedule the public hearing for next meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
It seems like a good use of the zoning after doing the conservation easement. It sounds like a lot of what was discussed when the zoning was re-issued.
Um, I guess the one thing I would say, it sounded like you were potentially talking about a future additional house on, what I guess would be parcel B. Um. If you have like some idea of where that would be. And I don't know if we care similarly on parcel A, if we want to see those kind of general locations for the final or for.
He said, so he said parcel B, sell, right? So that would be.
Right.
My assumption.
And we don't have to, as you just said, I don't know if we want to see that or if we're open to just.
Would, would he be selling the, the residence on parcel B, the additional residence there, without being subdivided?
No, so from what I understand from Adam, and Adam correct me if I'm wrong, but your intention is to, so there's others, sort of. Moment that's on the parcel B. This zoning only allows one unit for one lot. Doesn't matter how big the lot is or anything, but when you do a conservation easement, or if you do something called clustering your development rights, he can, he can sort of cluster in, in sort of create a more of a, a additional development area for, he could have up to, you know, a, a few homes really on, on this B in, in a certain area as part of that conservation easement where the remainder of the lot is protected, but then there's this sort of.
So that would be covered more under the conservation easement in terms of how that's negotiated. Okay.
Correct. But that has nothing to do with, with this subdivision, but it's still worthwhile to ask because we're in this process to just, and, and.
I mean, he said in the street area, so. Yeah.
Okay. Um. Actually, and, and I guess I'm curious, just to follow up on that, Adam, did you have a, a thought as to where the a, a new house on parcel A would be located? Or you, you're just planning to sell that property out as just vacant land?
Correct. I don't have a, any plans to put a home there myself. And I'm sure that whoever the new owner of. And I'm sure that whoever the new owner of that ten acre parcel is would follow all the appropriate, uh, you know. Everything that they've got to do to have a, a septic system and access to the, right, and all of that whole process is left up to the new owner.
Any other question before we move on to speaker and? Okay. Um, now I'm blanking. Do we have, we have to have a motion to declare?
To declare lead agency, yeah, and so I, I just prepared a draft one, you could, just somebody can move the resolved. And then all the language would be kind of put into the minutes, and if you don't wanna go through the whole wheresses.
So I'll make the motion, but I'm not sure if I understood, so for resolution, we don't have a motion, right?
Right, actually, did you have a number or not yet?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, okay, right, yeah, I will second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then the short environmental assessment form. Um. Do we want to read it all?
You don't need to, I, I, you know, just based on my um, look at everything. You know, everything uh, checked out in terms of, you know, appropriate responses for the site, for the action.
I guess the only question I had with, like, in thoughts of the way the conservation easement was talked about is if five should be also include the forest and agricultural. In terms of land uses.
Yeah, is there any agriculture on the land, Adam?
We hay the fields.
Okay.
It's about half forest and there's a row of apple trees along Nelson Road, a, a, an old hedge of trees. And there's a field there about a little, uh, somewhere between a third and a half of that ten acres is part of fields that we mow.
So I'll make that, what I'll do is I'll make that correction, I'll just have that for, for next meeting.
It has a five, but it's actually part of four. I don't know why the five is there. Wasn't five is on the next page.
Huh.
I don't know, but you'll know, you know what it is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make that note, of course.
Um, did anyone have any other? Concerns or questions with the filling out? It's mostly no's because it's just a subdivision, there's no development planned. Um, and then I guess the only other question I had based on, I mean, I know it's like this generates. The no endangered or threatened, but then there were email, like the communications with the town of Ithaca, so that there probably were. I don't know, I mean, you're kind of just, you're following. Though, though. This, you know, the state documentation by saying no, so I, I mean, they're planning the conservation easement anyway, so I think it's probably okay.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah, so then on this, in short environmental assessment form, it's just, a, a number of the responses are pulled from state databases. And so the town of Ithaca, when they reviewed the subdivision, because they, they have to, because it's right on the border of the town, of the, of the town of Ithaca, they said. There, it, there might be, because it borders the Eldridge Preserve and there's um, rare plant species in there. They said that it's, it's likely that some of those plant species are in that gorge on the, on the north side of the property. Because the state doesn't check those, um, and that, that's maybe a speculation from the town of Ithaca, it's probably fine just to keep it like that, but.
Yeah.
Um, that is an interesting note. But yes, certainly, certainly, maybe if there was, I'd say if there was development planned back there, that might be something to, to follow up on.
Yeah.
But s- since this is a, the intention is to place a protective conservation easement, it's, can be pretty sure that there'll be.
Yeah.
Very minor impact to the environment.
Alright, so we don't have to vote on this, the short form, right, versus reviewing it. Okay, did you have any other questions, Scott?
Well, why not say yes? Why not just make it yes?
I think it's not.
Change anything, because that's kind of what it's, we're saying, I.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, right?
I guess because we can't.
Started to talk, and I said.
Right. Okay.
Okay, wait on that, okay.
Okay.
And then the only other thing with this is, do you wanna set a public hearing for next meeting?
I mean, it sounds like you're having, they're having a meeting tomorrow, so they'll probably have a little bit more information on the easement, not that it'll be final.
Right.
But a little bit more information perhaps, so.
Yeah, well.
I guess it just, it's, uh, you know better than I do in terms of. Parallel tracks versus something getting more ahead if, if it matters.
Yeah. I don't think it should matter, as I said, I think the, the plat could be approved and then. He'll be just working on the conservation easement with this, with the advisory council and. And that'll probably take some time to get through, but that easement will then reflect both new, newly created properties. Um, the one, the one, the only extra comment though, as we're thinking about the public hearing is. It doesn't necessarily have to be um, taken care of by the next time, but it could be a condition of approval is that. On this plat as submitted, it talks about parcel B one and B two. I think it'd be best to just call it parcel uh, B. Yeah, so.
Because then the conservation easement will be overlaid as this, as a separate document.
Actually, it has nothing to do with the conservation easement, it's more just for the approval of the plat, it just, it makes it cleaner to just call it parcel A and parcel B. Rather than parcel A and B one and B two.
Okay.
So.
Cause I think it looks like it was put on there just to show where the easement would potentially be.
Right, right.
But yeah, that's fine.
And I think that was the original uh, thought from, from Adam, right, is that. There was gonna be an easement in the north part of the property, but after some discussions, and you're giving me a thumbs up, so. Yeah, um, so either, Adam, I think if you, if your surveyor could. Update the, the plat um, before the next meeting. Um, to just show parcel B and parcel A, that would be great, i- if they don't have time to, if they, they can't get in their schedule to change that. That's fine too, a public hearing could still be held at next meeting, the planning board could take action, but there would be a condition. On that, on that approval saying the plat needs to be uh, a parcel B and a parcel A. So yeah, I, I think a public hearing could be scheduled for next, the next meeting, to do, board wants to. Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks.
Okay. Cody. Nice.
Nice.
Can I ask you a question, though? I'm looking at the actual survey and the uh, surveyor did write on there. Parcel B two area proposed conservation easement, not intended to create an individual lot or intended to create a new tax map parcel, so. Although, you know, I can go back to them and pay them and ask them to. Scrub that and put just B on it, B and A. Why does it matter? He's already written on there that it was merely that, I basically wanted them to sort out where the pipelines were. In the area that would never be um. You know, an area that's protected because it's gorgeous, I just wanted him to put it on the map.
Yeah.
It doesn't really have any bearing on, on the subdivision.
Yeah.
The county, well, the county, I guess we can't really, we don't really know if the county will care one way or the other.
They will probably just, they'll um. No, I, I, I guess not, yeah, thanks for that, for the. Attention to that little detail there, Adam, so I, I, I think, I, I think you should be fine then on that, we'll just say that it's. B one and B two is one lot and then parcel A is the other lot, just to make it clear in the, in the approving language at least.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so Adam, um, there's a public hearing now set for the August meeting, which is third Tuesday of August. And that'll be at seven, and the board will take action on the subdivision then. To, you're welcome to stick for the rest of the meeting, otherwise, we'll, we'll see you then. Okay.
Okay, next is the one sixty-four Yable Road. Um. Again, a subdivision of one lot into two. And this one, we can declare lead agency, um, we can't vote on this one, we have to do two meetings.
Right, because you have to schedule a public hearing to, to take action on it.
Okay.
Did you all ever review and approve a subdivision in one meeting? Just curious.
Probably not, I don't think so. I don't remember, I don't know.
Yeah.
It just seemed like.
It's a lot, yeah.
For something that's putting back what was already there.
Right.
Seems a little much, but that's okay, we have to follow the process. Okay, um, I don't know.
Carl is here.
Oh, hi, Gary and Preston, yay! Okay, um, I don't know, it seems pretty straightforward, but if you wanna give us the one, two sentence summary, go for it.
Sure, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna hold the mic for you.
Pretty straightforward, um, we purchased a lot on Yable Road in two thousand and two, built a house. On that lot, it's one sixty-four Yable Road, and then the following year, we bought the adjacent. Lot, that was about the same size, about two, each one's about three and a half acres. Um, and then we um, blended that lot uh, to the other one, and that's the way it's been. Now we just wanna go back to uh, to this sublighting that out, the same. Uh, the same amount of ba- boundaries that existed then, for the purpose of selling that lot to. The next door neighbor on the other side, and they do not want, check again, they do not want. To um, I'm sorry, what's the term?
It's like, just, yeah, annex or consolidate the lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they do not want to consolidate it, their lot, they wanna keep it as a separate lot.
Okay.
That's it.
Does anyone on the board have any question? Nope, okay. Anybody?
I can motion to, to find a meeting.
I'm calling, I'll make a second. For the resolution attached, with the number we don't have.
Um, Carol.
Yes.
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 Yes. Oh, right. Then the short environmental assessment form again. Um. I think the only thing I had was, is this got cut off, if we could just get that acreage fixed, that would be great. Um, did anyone have any concerns or questions with the? Responses, again, mostly no's due to the lack of development.
And so I, she gave it a new survey, right, that's the one that was getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we need a, a actual stamp, right, survey by somebody.
Then do I have to submit that prior to next meeting, at any, any particular time, or?
Yeah, so if uh. To get on the August meeting and to have enough time to open, to schedule a public hearing. It's the, it would be three weeks in advance of the meeting, which is right around, yeah, it, it seems right around the corner. Um. I can look at the. Yeah, uh, let's see, calendar, yeah, so we, we have to just whatever, three weeks before. Okay, so if, if you can submit, um, right, yeah, if, if you can submit uh. One by, um, yeah, the, the thirtieth of July. We could get you on, so the board could tentatively schedule a public hearing, just contingent upon it being submitted in time to advertise a public hearing. And then if we don't get it in time, we just, we won't hold the public, I won't put on notice and all that.
Okay.
So, not for next month, but following?
No, for next month, but just, just. Right, yeah. Oh, and, and this is more for the board to know, that yes, if, if you're able to get me a survey by the thirtieth. Then we can, we have enough time to schedule a public hearing, there, there's a notice period of, of a certain amount of time. So I'm just telling the board that they can tentatively schedule a public hearing contingent upon you submitting.
And then so for me, I come back, or at what time for the?
Uh, well. We're planning for you to come back in August.
Oh, sure.
But this, but this is on you, if, if you're able to, if, if you're able to submit the, up to the, 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 the new plat by the thirtieth. We'll be able to get you on the agenda for the August meeting. If you can't, just let me know and then we'll plan to see you um, in September. Okay, great.
Okay, so no questions on the forms, so we can make a motion for public hearing.
Motion, public hearing.
Contingent upon the.
Contingent upon the survey. Yes.
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 Lot of process, a lot of process, yeah, a lot of it's state driven, so we just have time to follow the. Protocols, yeah, so you, so you're all set to go, so it just, um, we will coordinate offline, but um. With the third survey that brought up as that survey map shows and. And then just let me know if, if they say they, if they can, you know, submit it to you by third. Yeah, great.
Thank you. Okay, number three, nineteen fourteen D M B Road. Um, this is for opening public hearing and taking action on the final site plan for the coffee trailer. Um. I think we've heard a lot about this, do we wanna have them come up again, or begin?
I didn't say, I didn't.
Right, yes, since the last time, the variance um, on this property was approved to allow a restaurant use.
And I think the site plan was slightly revised in the dimensioning, but otherwise, pretty much how we saw. Yeah.
Yeah, so the updates to the, the site plan were just showing that there was some DOT requirements on there. Yeah, lots of DOT requirements for this one, um, for that, for that entry on, and I, you know, across, across the state highway.
Yep.
And the update of the twenty-four foot wide drive, which I think was your recommendation requirement. And, yeah, so the, the trailer's temporary, it'll like get an operating permit um, from Steve Courtright, co enforcement officer. The parking spaces are temporary, but the, the suggestion was if you're gonna be building a road back to that new coffee shop at that time, they, you know, it could be lined up with where the. Where the.
Where the parking is now.
Yeah, some of the parking on the right side, on the north side.
Okay. Um, I will open public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this particular project? If you know, right, yeah. Um.
Oh.
I should, yeah, I think we'll call on Jim.
Hi, I just wanted to um, to show, uh, my wife around the meeting here tonight, just to show our support, we think it's gonna be great for the hammer. Hi, I just wanted to, um, to show my wife around the meeting here tonight, just to show our support, we think it's gonna be great for the Hamlet to have this additional thing, and we're we're really happy that they're pursuing this and doing what it takes to make the town a better place, thanks.
Great, thank you. Um, if you want to speak again, it's up to you. Okay. All right, any, any more comments? Okay, I will close the public hearing. And we can move on to approval of the final site plan. Do we have any conditions? I can't think of any. Okay, uh, we only have to do final, we don't have to do preliminary, right, okay, so just final approval?
Well, I just.
Yes.
This is just academic.
Yeah.
So. The zero three wants sixty-five feet into the, your driveway, they want it right away, is that so they can turn around or something?
No, no, that's.
That's the existing right away, off the, off the.
Yeah. Because we are fifty-five, literally, we start from our, through the signs, like this much, but because we are fifty-five mile an hour, we have to have sixty.
Yeah, if you look, it goes from, I'm gonna be brought in the summer, but it was thirty-five on the, to seventy, to seventy-five, I mean, the, the right away is.
That can all sound.
It's on the survey here.
I know.
Literally, the former, uh, nurse kind of did that, their initial, so it's not, it doesn't affect our plan.
Yeah.
It does seem.
It's, thank you. All right, that's.
It hasn't zoomed, like, I almost hear that.
Zach was just describing the, the huge right of way that he has, uh, deal with him and have to do with that. It's basically sixty-five feet from the edge of asphalt into what feels like their property, but it's DOT.
It's a.
Oh, okay, okay.
Probably the center line.
You contacted.
Oh, so you are trying to get the speed limit changed, is that what you're saying, yeah, yeah. Right, right, okay.
Yeah, that's, it's probably, it's got to be the center line.
Center line.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, saving fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, should we have that modified on this note, or is it clear enough on there, because on here, it does say to road edge?
Oh, yeah, we could do that, yeah, let's do that.
I don't know how, what the, what the protocol is for doing that.
No, it's fine, we, um.
If we can just manually.
Yeah, so, so Zach, on your, on your site plan, it does say to road edge, but I'll just, I'll just say it's a center line, because that's what we measured that one, yeah. Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, clarification, no, okay.
There could be a motion of the, this approval, and if there's any conditions, but sounds like there's none.
All right, so would he make some motion?
I move that we.
Yeah.
You're seconding it.
You can second.
Second.
All right.
Okay.
Yes, David?
Yes.
Yes. Now, the question is, when do you open?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just make sure before you leave, you'll sign that.
Yep. Okay. And wow, we are doing good tonight. Um, number four, one ninety Hill Road, which I believe you are here, would you like to say anything? Summary?
Yeah, sure, maybe I'll just speak on it, it might be easier. Sure, so, um, yeah, Andrew Thurn here and, and his, and his two siblings, Daniel and Karen, own the property on Hill Road, a large hundred ninety-two acre property, he said it's been your family since nineteen forty-three. Yeah, his grandparents bought it. And it's used as family farm, and so they're just looking to subdivide it and, you know, manage it on their own as, as different siblings do, and so. One. One seat. Usually we're supposed to make.
Okay, um. So we're looking at the sketch plat today, right, preliminary. Um, there will need to be a public hearing scheduled, that, that I'm reading correctly?
Yeah, so there could be, um, right, so a public hearing, yeah, so because it's a standard subdivision, it adds in lots of other steps.
Right.
So there will be a public hearing, a required public hearing for the preliminary plat review. Um, so you could, because this plat is drawn up pretty, pretty well.
Yeah.
Um, unless the board has suggested changes or, you know, you know, from it, um, there could be a, a hearing on, on the preliminary plat, or at least scheduled for, for the August meeting. Um, you know, because it's standard subdivision, he's required to submit this resource map. This one is, it's, it's kind of hard to read, just because it's such a big property and, um, but what it's really showing are areas of prime farmland and non-prime farmland, and that's, comes from the US Department of Agriculture. And then areas of steep slope. So the board is empowered to condition this approval, um, if they so choose about areas that should be restricted from future development. Um. Their most recent example that I saw was a property on Miller Road. It was, takes access off Miller Road, and it went down to Hornbrook Road. And the board placed a no-build area on the Hornbrook side where it's kind of steep and wooded. Um, and then there was, um, some building sites up on the, um, up on the Miller side. So, you know, Dambie State Forest is to the south of this property. Um. Future subdivisions are possible, given the acreage of each lot. You know, decisions don't need to be made tonight, but it's just something to, to consider and maybe ask questions about, you know, future intentions and, um, you know, if, if there needs to be a, a more kind of concentrated look at certain areas and. Hey, Andrew, could you just come to, yeah, yeah, just slide the chair, or you can submit your, yeah, just slide up so we can.
So, we, uh, we're just. It protects my brother's wife. Our future development, you know, that we, yeah.
When if there was future development, wouldn't that be subject to site plan?
No.
Yeah.
But it, isn't it, isn't anything in this zone?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, so, so, single-family homes are required, yeah, but, but, but that's just since the board has seen single-family homes come before them, um.
What, yeah, what, what would be an example? Like, where it wouldn't, something could happen that the board wouldn't have a chance to, to agree with that. It could just be subdivided.
Anytime land is sold, it goes to the.
No.
No, but subdivisions.
Subdivisions do, but if you, yeah.
So if we wanted to not break it down any smaller, but just sell it determined plot, then the board would not have anything to say about it.
Right, yeah, ju- just selling an existing lot, um, is, is that, that's just a private transaction. Right, but when you want to divide land, that's when the town gets involved. In terms of where the town can have the most input, though, I would say is in the subdivision process. When you start looking at a single-family home coming before the board, even though it's listed as it needs to go through site plan review, I'm been doing, there's, there's, um, you're kind of limited on how much you can condition a, a single-family home placement. If you really read into case law, it's really discouraged, and it's not recommended to have towns even, even go through site plan review for sing, to, to make people go through site plan review for single-family homes. And that's why the ones that are coming for the board, I've just recommended.
But they've already been subdivided, or, so if it, so I'm sorry. But he would have to subdivide it before he could sell it off for then single-family use, right, so.
Unless you sold it off in one piece and wanted it as a single. Family home, right?
Um, I.
It already is.
Yeah, yeah, there already is one, so yet, in order to build another home, you know, there, there would, because each lot is going to have an existing home on it.
Right.
That's it. Uh, well, I don't know, uh, the east, uh.
So east doesn't, partially?
East is always here, right?
So you're saying.
Do you have, you have us as having a home on this piece?
Um, you know, I don't have it in front of me, I think, yeah.
Building show, so good.
I mean, not to complicate it, I don't know if this matters or not, but, well.
Yeah, so like, this, one has a cabin and a house and a barn, two has a house, three says building, but it does not say house.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a, well.
Right.
So this property could have a, a, another home on it, the other properties, um, could not without either
subdivided.
Yeah, another subdivision, right, because they have an existing home, so the zone district just allows one unit, one lot.
Hmm.
Um, so, any other home, and, and already, it's kind of, there's already for that middle piece, you know, there's already two houses, that's already considered a non-conforming use, it doesn't matter in terms of the subdivision, but let's say your, your brother wanted to build another home, he would have to, it, it couldn't un- unless he went to do something creative, I don't want to get too complicated here, but, um.
Five, right, I'm happy to talk about it.
Yeah, it, it, it might be worth it, I mean, um, because of the acreage is so big, Dambie has a, a provision of called clustering development, right, so it's, it's in this zone district, it's one unit per ten acres, so with this lot being thirty-four acres, you actually could have one more home on it to make three units, but what would happen is the, um, the rest of your lot would have to remain undeveloped and.
Sometimes get a, uh, permission to do something different there. Yeah.
To, like, in terms of doing what's, that's.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
Unless you were to do something like a planned development zone. Just basically asking for a rezoning.
Of course, I am not planning on putting houses.
I don't know, I, I, I think it's good, because, and, and this is important, it's, it is a standard. A lot of the language, when you read the subdivision ordinance, it's really long, and it's really thick and detailed, and it, and it really empowers the planning board to condition these types of subdivisions. When I read it, what I think is that it's talking about our old town village, those kind of subdivisions. Where, where a developer says, hey, I've got a fifty-acre piece of land, I want to chop it up into ten lots, and I'm going to be the master developer and develop homes. That, I think, is really where it's really very appropriate and very critical of the planning board to say, okay, this area, we're going to really steer you away from. And that siblings are looking just to divide it and do estate planning, or to or, the boards still can buy, buy their authority in this, in this ordinance condition where things are allowed to be built and where things are not allowed to be built, so it's totally at your discretion.
But in this situation, it would really be a reach, and it would be an imposition, I think, what was the, what was the situation when we're over on the East Miller, or, yeah, East Miller.
I don't have the case in front of me.
There's that steep slope on the other side.
Right.
Somebody maybe could try to put a driveway or a bridge and all of that, and that, in that case, currently, the planning board said, you know, we'll okay the subdivision, but we don't want to, we don't think it's a good idea to have that, anything developed over there, but that knowing that geography over there, I think that probably will, and that was reasonable. But there's nothing here.
That was the more recent one?
That was last year.
And I think one of the neighbors was worried about drainage on their property also. We said that was the top of the, and their house, but the bottom one weren't broke, I think.
Yeah, like a subdivision, you know.
Yeah, I was trying to like a subdivision, you know.
So here. Is that, I have a whole hell of a lot to do with somebody that has a large acre property and they just tried, you know, they're.
I get muted now. I can't hear anything. Oh.
That was.
How long, how long were you muted, Joel?
I probably want to swipe.
Well, I mean, e- even when you were not muted, the the sound had gotten really bad. So I think the point where it's um virtually unintelligible.
Luckily, we have a great note minute taker here is our planning board secretary. She'll, it'll all be in the minutes and um and it'll be. So, alright, I think you're the only ones here, but so.
It's only, I don't know if I'm going off topic now, but the only comment I'd make is we don't have a lot of good soil in Dandby, so it should just be noted. They're saying this is prime soil and isn't that not true for most of Dandby? So, I mean, you can keep it, right?
Yes, I I I'm just curious, does the soil matter to the board?
Other towns do. So, you know, other towns preserve good farmland to, so it stays good farmland because they're running out. So there's that.
Yeah, we're, we're, so we just mowed all of it. And we're harvesting hay on all the, all the fields.
I'm just, it's just a comment. It's not like a.
Yeah.
Restriction or anything. Yep.
Process is what I ask.
Yeah.
We're not doing anything differently, so.
Yeah, I in. The board could certainly, I mean, you could, there's, there's. You could. Um.
Don't build over in the over fifteen percent. And I don't know if you can say it this way, but like, because you probably have to say do or don't, but like prioritize nine prime soil area.
For development.
For development. As just like. I the the one thing that show up on the map other than forest land, which the other would be like forest land eight hundred and seventy-five feet back on your property to build a house against state forest.
Well, but there's Curtis Road coming down here. Someone lives down there.
Right. I mean, there, yeah, I just, I guess I was thinking these blocks, like, you're probably not going to build yourself a nine hundred foot driveway to build a house at the end of it. Some people would, I guess, but.
With space. That's a surely problem.
It's not, so it's not a class.
Whatever.
No, it is.
Any.
No, it is. It is.
It is.
No, it is. It is designated, it is, it is a, it is the US Department of Agriculture designated prime farm land.
This is.
What is?
What I would ask of the board is if you could see it from our perspective enough to, but as few restrictions on it as.
Right.
Because what that does do is it lowers it. Not that we have any intentions and nothing would happen without to be involved in it. But what it does do is that that it's a use which lowers the value of taxes don't remain the same.
Right.
So that would be a restrictions put on a property would be a real liability.
I appreciate that. And do you have like real deep topsoil there or anything special? No.
We have, we have, first of all, I'm talking about Mount Forest Hills.
Yeah.
So we've managed to support cows since nineteen forty-three.
Hmm.
You have to be careful. And we have to fertilize and you have to drop the hills not too deep in the soil because you'll get clay or shale everywhere. I do happen to have a shale pit there because that's what you run into. So we've managed to do what we do, but we are in a hell with no water and there's no good soil there, but, you know.
Yeah.
It's not what we would get down. That's.
Or up in the King Ferry or wherever you get topsoil sixteen deep, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, um, and farming is what farming is.
Right.
We harvested everything. We didn't get a dime.
Yeah.
That's expensive.
Yeah.
So, uh, that we just want to keep the fields sealed and we're paying money to do that. And if we'd like to grow out the field and if you let it grow up, it's like every other country. But we're doing our part to the best of our ability.
Sounds on both ends. I don't know if you want to.
I.
No. Okay. Sorry.
Um. So if I just had a couple of like other sort of thoughts on this. One is that you are looking very long, y- y- you can look long term, so not just at the current owner, but but fifty years out, hundred years out. Um, the other thought, though, to balance that out is that anything, any other subdivision or even um the opportunity to maybe cluster development rights, like, which actually would be a a a probably a really appropriate thing here. Gives, basically, it's a negotiation between the property owner and the town to say, you can, you know, it might be more appropriate to build closer to the road, but this back area is going to, um, you know, just remain, you know, less developed. That can be done at at a at a later time. Um. The 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 a little, and then another thought too is that the other difference with the the NOUT property, I think that's how you pronounce the last name, that's K N O U T, now property over on Miller and Hornbrook. There are overlay zone districts where you employ, you know, though there is. So there were um, there's a habitat quarter overlay there, riparian, uh, it's part of buttermilk, um, headwaters and the aquifer overlay. So, so the board, I think, looked at those areas that had, you know, really, you know, you know, taken into consideration when updating the zoning to say, yeah, these areas should, um, you know, re- remain, remain protected and and they, and you can do that through the subdivision process. Do you want to see this?
No, I was trying to think. There was another one that we did too that we had overlaying. But well, we did a no build area and they had a conservation easement and then there was wetlands and then.
On marsh.
Maybe on marsh. I don't remember. Anyway, yeah.
Let's make it pop.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, personally, I don't foresee issues with what they have planned. Um, I mean, the the resources are documented, so it's not like we're ignoring them. I ins- it's probably likely, I guess, it would be more likely that they would build a house on parcel three only because it doesn't have a house now.
And I can tell you, I have no interest in owning a house.
Okay. Oh, that's yours. Okay, okay. Um. It just seems like so many of the avenues of future development are going to come back for some kind of review.
That's my initial thought.
But it's also a very large property.
Yes, so either subdivision would come back for review or. Development rights and one person would come back.
What?
The cluster you're talking about, like? White Hawk or?
No, no, it's, all cluster means, Danny added this unique provision in its zoning when it when it updated, basically saying, so take this hundred acre lot. The zoning allows for for one unit per ten acres. Instead of dividing the land into ten acre plots, um, which, you know, maybe isn't of interest, maybe, um, what what you what you could do is say, we want to build ten homes, but we're going to cluster them just down here.
On like fifteen acres and then leave all the rest.
But then the planning board could say, you can build it up here, but the rest of your property has to just remain wild.
Thirty acres. We talked about that three, okay.
Right.
Right, right. And and actually, that's, it's a, it's a really great balance with, you know, providing housing, making income on your property, but also at the same time, um, the town in return gets, um, you know, there's a maybe not gets, but there's protection of land, especially with the backs of the state forests. Um, you know, there's, there's probably lots of just really amazing habitat, I would imagine, in the south part of the property um, as it goes to the.
Throughout the property, I mean, I have turkeys. Actually, the animals come to my yard because they know they're safe there.
Right.
Babies, it will leave their babies there and don't do the thing, you know, they're safe in my yard.
Hmm.
You must get some bears up through there. Yeah.
We don't have to go that far. I, we had a bear.
Moving out. Yeah.
Road.
Nice. You and Gunnerman.
We could talk about bears all day. I'm ready to call my videos. Yeah.
I mean, it allows, it allows housing when when we talk about how we did it, but it also preserves land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what land the world gives to us or.
And who wishes.
Provides, yeah.
And the town, Danny, still open to like Eagle Village and stuff like that.
Into doing that, like a kind of another White Hawk?
Yeah.
So that was a planned development zone. I I I think absolutely that's a great model of development. Um, where, I mean, that's.
More than one house with ten acres, correct?
It's on a hundred twenty acres, yes, and it'll be thirty homes built out of thirty-one, Cindy, yeah, thirty, right? I was saying thirty-one, but that's the common house, right? Okay. Oh, the townhouse is one. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, so that that model of 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 development, um, I I think is a great model of development. I think there were some hiccups along the way that somebody living there could could tell you about, have all the. Yeah, but but it does, what it does is it it concentrates, it makes a little sort of village and it's a hundred twenty acres that are well managed, um, either some part of it is farmed or just for recreation. And and there's no other intention of the community to be to be adding, you know, you know, building another.
So they're still, telling the town still in favor of that.
I mean, I can't speak fully for the town board, but I but I, at least from a planning perspective, that that's a great model of of housing. Rather than just chopping up land and and.
If you wanted to do more, one house with ten acres, that'd be the way to do it.
Correct. And you can do that. Danny's ordinances allow that clustering.
I have no intentions.
But even if you did, it's it's totally within your right and it's it's something that, as I said, on the balance, it allows protection um, or, you know, conservation of other areas.
So can I motion to declare the data agency? Is that what you need to?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Alright, I'll motion.
I will second.
Yes.
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 Um.
Not yet. So, because there there's a few steps in this process as I, you know, there, this is the sketch plot review. Uh, what do you want to go over this for?
Uh, it, either way.
Okay. Then there's a a preliminary plot review and hearing, there's a public hearing then, and then there's a final plot review. Even if nothing changes about this, it's a loser required that the, the board has to go through. So it's going to be at least another few months until this is, you know. So the board at this.
Not at all. That's a, that's a state.
Um, the state allows it and Danny adopted it, but every town can do it differently.
So we have to schedule.
You, you could, uh, for next time.
Can I, can I motion that? Are we using the one session? Sorry.
Um, I'm okay with that unless anyone has any any recommendations or comments on modifying any of the materials before we go to public hearing? No? Okay.
And any changes on the flat that need to be?
They're pretty shameful, man. You know, all the, all the, the, all the buildings are documented and all of the features are documented as far as I can tell from all the materials provided. I mean, these will go, these will be all three reported, right?
Right. And one recommendation that that Andrew took when he's working with the surveyor that I liked is that the lot line, one of the lot lines follows um a a creek.
Hmm.
So instead of, it gets tricky when property lines sort of cross creek and so that I think that that's, that's a good way to separate land out um is by natural features.
Uh, maybe a second. You made a motion for them. Uh, I can second, I guess, for public hearing for August. So that would be, so for next for August, then we would have public hearing. Preliminary plot review, yes?
Right, which would just be this exact one because I didn't hear any suggested changes on this, right? Or on the resource map?
Right, good. Okay.
Okay.
And then, um, the seeker.
Yeah, so includes the termination of environmental, so this is the next, the next time I'll prepare.
There'll be a a short form or no?
Right. Well, there's a short form with with this packet.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, I guess I didn't, I forgot to say to review it.
Yeah. Hmm. So should we?
Yeah, there it is right there. Sure. Why don't you just review it now?
Okay, okay.
Um, let me know what you think. I think everything sort of checks out in terms of Andrew came to my office and we looked at it together.
Yep.
So the board would take action on the environmental significance at the plot review, at the preliminary plot review next time.
Wait, the acreage, this should have there'd be zero disturbed, but you would have total and.
Oh, right.
Right, so it'll have to update the acreage.
Okay. Catch.
I never, so I never know. Can you, for the next time, check how these are supposed to be done for something that has no development? Because like on the other ones we reviewed tonight, they were all no's because there's no development. So you do technically have like they are connected, but there's no change.
Let's look at this.
Insert, sorry, I was looking at the water and utilities.
Hmm.
Oh, he checked, yes. Does a frozen action meet the energy codes? Yes. Would a frozen action connect with existing? Probably, oh, that actually should have been yes um for his.
Can you change it from there?
Yours is, yours is yes. It's the other ones that were no.
Um.
We can just set, because I feel like it flips waps. So if we can, I'm have my thank yous. The water connections, because on his, it says yes, it connects to public or private ten and eleven.
Eleven, yeah.
Versus the other ones say no, but I think, I think people get confused because it's either existing and they're not changing it. So then they say like, do, am I connected? Because I'm not changing anything or am I not connected?
Okay.
Right.
Or can be.
You you could also, I just put an applicant, put N A, not applicable, I mean.
Yeah.
You're right.
I just for consistency, we should.
Let me, I'll, alright, I'll, um.
Okay.
I'll make a general note. I I'll I'll review all the short forms and just and get some guidance mistaken about why not just to make it all clean and
Okay.
straightforward. Um.
I didn't see it either way. I didn't see it either way, it just seemed like we should have the same responses. Okay. Alright, I don't have any others, anyone else have any other, sorry, I'm being picky and detailed tonight.
Well, no, I also was like, shouldn't we check for this?
Oh. Number four is four slash five.
That's not true.
Is the rural agriculture. Or we could check forest.
Cause it is checked in fourteen.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah. Yeah. Easy changes.
Yeah, and, and I'll just.
Cleaning it up for next time.
Right. I said the last up again, it's, it's a process, it's just, this process of doing all this.
Okay, is there anything else? That we needed to do for tonight? So you'll bring the same material, updated short EAF. And then we'll have a public hearing in August.
Right, and I'll prepare parts two and three of seeker. Because there's no changes being requested of these plaques, can everyone just keep them? So that I don't have to ask them to print out new ones.
Yep.
Yeah, so keep these. And, um. So then basically, Andrew, want to submit anything back to me, just show up to the meeting, then, we did public hearing. Notice will be sent out to, yeah.
The twentieth, I think I saw. I mean, doesn't have to show up to the meeting, kind of.
What's that?
Oh, we do, okay.
For, for.
For the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want them to schedule for September?
He made a set of August.
Right.
Earlier, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I, I've got a bunch of stuff going, I think, I think.
Alright, you, you probably, as, as, probably don't, need to be, I think, it's in the, the bulk of the information you've communicated at this meeting. It's always good to have applicant there, because with the public hearing, there could be potentially, people, people will comment on it, or people. Uh, you know, neighbors will be notified, um, so you might wanna just address those, it, it, it would be in your best interest to be here. Okay. So August twentieth on this, at seven P M.
Okay, go ahead, yep, thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright.
Yeah, whatever we can do to make it to particularly popular, that's at this point, great jeopardy if someone would develop a planet. We change everything. That's why everything is.
Right. Yeah.
So basically, looking at like the shortest timeline.
Yeah.
There'd be the public hearing next month, and then, but then the, the board, the board would. Take action on the preliminary plot, that, what that means is they either approve it or disapprove it or approve it with conditions. Um, and then you make those changes, if any, sounds like this probably won't be any, but probably, it sounds like they're leaning towards just approving it. Um, as is, but they, the, they would approve it preliminarily, and then they would schedule a final plot. Uh, the, the hearing at that final plot review is optional, it sounds like maybe it's probably not necessary unless there's resounding. Public comment at the preliminary, preliminary plot, but then the border have to meet a third time in September to actually rubber stamp and approve it. So at the earliest, it could be done the third Tuesday of September.
There's no way that it should finish up next.
Um, I don't think so. The, the, the ordinance is pretty clear about these, about these different steps.
We don't want something out of that, just like.
It wasn't done properly, right?
Yeah.
And I think David warned, he said, not warned me, but he said the, the major subdivisions have, have three deliberate three steps to it. For the minor subdivisions are two steps. Most places, minor subdivisions are actually just reviewed and approved by staff, um, Dambi seems to be one of the only towns that, that punted to the planning board.
Of course we are.
So I think, like, 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 right in, the Dryden planner approved, he would be able to approve. Or he would review this, I think up to four lots, division he, he works at, but. Anyway. The town.
Alright, talk real quick on your summary, who's yours, it's gonna kick you out.
Alright, so you're all set for now, yeah. Uh, I don't, don't have, I'd say, yeah, verbal report, two big things coming up, so the, the new C D B G homeowner. Housing grant application, um, is due at the end of this month, so I'm working with Toma Development Consultants on that. We, every week I get a new property owner reaching out to me to add to the waiting list. We send them the application materials to get on, I don't know if they actually qualify, they say they do, but. I think we have at least eight homeowners who have, who have reached out, which is great, this is, it's amazing. Um, the county officially gave us the award for that money to reimburse for Toma's, um, fees, so there's no cost to the town for that. The other grant that the town is applying for, um, uh, with the help of Hunt Engineers is a water quality. Correct, correct, yeah, I'm just, yeah, sounds good, yeah. Uh, the town is applying for a water quality improvement, uh, grant. Um, this is a follow-up to the Hamlet sewer study, so this, this. Um, and this is also a, a grant that's being written by Hunt Engineers at no cost to the town. This is a, i- i- if the town has awarded this grant, it will, it would basically be a, um, funding. Up to seventy-five percent of the construction cost, um, for searing the Hamlet centers. Um, so it's like millions of dollars, um, but. That doesn't mean that the town would actually, one, accept the grant, or even follow through with the project. Um, there are many layers to this, such as forming a sewer district, which as you know, forming that would, would sort of be a levy. There's a lot of decision points for the town board to make in terms of this project, but the, with, with the thought of. It's a free grant writing, there's no cost to the town, the town could. Back off if, if they want to, if, if the town has awarded all this money, um, that the town doesn't have to accept it if it just doesn't feel right. And, and also, I think one thing that the, the engineer said that it's, it's kind of a litmus test, he said this grant will. Help give the town an indication if this project would be, um, received. Highly by the state and war, awarded more funding, if it doesn't get awarded, then that's sort of an, an indication that it's just not a competitive project.
So it's state money.
Yes, yes, and then there would basically, what would the town would do after that is just pile on more grants.
Yeah.
Um, the, the idea and what the state wants ideally. Is that the people in the district don't have to, would, would pay up to six hundred fifty-six dollars per year for sewer. That's the goal, when the state looks at these projects and the grants that they're going to dole out. They wanna see that people in these areas won't have, have more than that financial burden. So those are the two grants that we're working on this month. Um, otherwise, I have a lot on my, um, still on my to-do list, I still owe the town board an updated special event law. That I worked on a few months ago and kind of put to the back burner, um, as well as. Short-term rentals, we need to pick that back up again, there's a lot of, yeah, there, there, there's some things that need to sort of, uh, come back up to the surface again.
Sorry to interrupt this, the state put out a short commeration, right, like where the lease register is that?
Did the governor sign that?
Oh, wow.
Okay, so last I heard, the governor hadn't signed it yet, but, right, so if the governor signs. Basically, so, anybody else is following, but the, um. The state is trying to create just the whole statewide registry of short-term rentals that would, would require. Instead of, that the town was sort of considering doing that on its own, like other towns have done, and, and it's a big lift. So if the state actually does it, um, then there's a mechanism for that, for, for, for those, uh, it, it just kind of.
We don't even have a choice.
Right, right.
Right.
But last I heard, the governor hadn't signed.
Okay.
So.
So when you talk about the foster sewer thing, I mean, has anybody looked at what the foster new sewers, if you're doing it on your own?
Right.
Well, and I.
And I think I probably paid, what, like, two hundred every two years to come get it. Yeah, like, it's the initial cost and then the maintenance.
But, I hope that. I just also don't see, like. Time like to get developed without a certain, like, a certain, so, you know, so I, I just put under contract the house next to Zach's and, you know, I, I made in. In the, some remarks that, you know, could be developed, but it's, your, your restriction is going to be from the house department. You know, even though it's a, it's a buildable lot, I don't know, I just don't see, I don't know if that lot's configured right for it, but it just seems. I, I don't know how you fit more loans.
How big is the lot?
Three acre, well, it's just about three acres.
Get squeezed in like.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I think even for that right now, if you look at the house department, it says one, one acre.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It would just be nice, it'd be nice if something like this was.
Yeah.
And it wasn't a burden on the homeowners, only the homeowners that are on the, in the Hamlet too, because that is when some of our most rundown buildings are too.
Right. Right, so it's just looking at the Hamlet centers, so it wouldn't be like up Gundermann or.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just interesting, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, that's, that's a real high level thing.
Okay. We did it.